Mic check.
Okay, I've got 12 o'clock. You guys ready? Okay.
We'll ever be.
Welcome, everybody. I have to say this is quite a turnout. I hope you all continue to come to Board of Elections meetings because they are so fun. You will learn a lot. So I'm the director and for the first part of this meeting, I will be running the show. Our newly appointed Chair Joe Myers is unable to be with us today. He had a family emergency. So in accordance with our procedures, I'll preside over the meeting until the Board elects a secretary. So at that point, I will turn the meeting over to the secretary to run. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and invite everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on our agenda will be the swearing in of board members. So all of the appointed board members will be sworn in, even if they were already board members. So we are going to invite District Court Judge Calvin Chandler to come up. He will be administering the oaths to our members. And we will be swearing them in an alphabetical order. So we will start with Paula Clarity.
To the Constitution, powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
As member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
According to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll have Edward Lewis. We'll sign them all at the end. I think that might be easier. Oh, of course. Come on out. Yes.
If you will place your left hand on the Bible there and raise your right hand for it. And there's your cheeky. I state your name.
I Ed Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or maybe.
Or maybe.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United.
With the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
A member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me.
So help me God.
All right, next up Randy Pelton.
Yes, sir. Put that in your left hand, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I Randy Pelton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or maybe.
Or maybe.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor.
That I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
And not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United.
With the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will well and truly.
And that I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me.
So help me God. Thank you, Dexter.
All right, David Smutsky saved the newest member for last.
I state your name.
I Dave Smutsky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional power.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or maybe.
Or maybe.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will well and truly.
And I will well and truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of. Of the office.
Of the office.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
As a member of the Brunswick County Board of Elections.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me.
So help me God.
Okay, so now I do need you all to sign those, but I would like for all of the board members, if I could, get you to come down so we can get a picture of the newly sworn in board. Wonderful, thank you. Thanks for being the photographer, Melissa. Yeah, we need to, I believe Melissa's got the forms that need to be signed. So. Yes. Well, I'm thinking we might be able to get the judge to sign them all and then you all can sign after. No?
Sitting in my wrong spot.
Congratulations, sir.
Thanks again.
Yep. Yes.
Okay, well, congratulations. Welcome, new board members. Okay, so at this point, I will continue to drive the meeting, so to speak, and we're going to move to the election of secretary. In accordance with the general statutes and our proceedings. And so I will open the floor to see if we have a motion for a member to serve as secretary.
Madam Director, I have been on the board for now 12 years, going on 13. And since at least 10 years prior to my joining the board. We have historically shared the chairmanship and the secretarieship from different parties. In an interest of bipartisanship and fairness to all of the voters of Brunswick County. In that regard, I would like to nominate Mr. Lewis to be our secretary for the coming term.
Okay. All right, we have a motion nominating Ed Lewis to serve as secretary. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
None for me.
If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed with a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ed. And Mr. Lewis, I will now turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the board for nominating and electing me to the position of secretary. The next item on the agenda is the recognition of recently served board members. And Sarah, you're running.
Yes, I did want to take just a brief opportunity to recognize two board members that will no longer be serving. The last time we had a meeting, it was not known whose names it did and who would be appointed. So we really weren't able to recognize anyone that might not be returning. Timothy Randall, I don't believe he was able to be here. Timothy Randall served from 2023 to 2025 as a member of the board. And I very much enjoyed working with him, and I think you all could probably agree. And so we do have a certificate of appreciation for him, and we will mail that to him just in appreciation. And then we have another departing board member, Stuart Smith. Stuart Smith, I believe everybody in this room probably knows Stuart. He served on the board for 22 years, which is incredible. He was very dedicated. He hired me. So I have known Stuart since the beginning. And because of his long tenure, we have decided to host a reception to celebrate him. We really wanted to give him the opportunity to catch up with people that he's worked with over the 22 years. So we'll be hosting that reception on Tuesday, August 12th at 2:30 in Building D here at the Government Center, which is the Brunswick Grill and Marketplace. I did print up a few invitations if anyone wants one. I can also email that information to you. It's really open to anyone who knows Stuart and would like to wish him well as he departs his service on the Board of Elections. And that's all I had for that.
If I may.
Yes.
I'd like to recognize also one former board member, Boyd Williamson, who is sitting in the back. Boyd and Stuart were on the board when I joined in 2013. And it's been my honor and privilege to learn an awful lot from Boyd through his tenure. Thank you, Boyd.
I'd like to ditto that. I really appreciate your guiding me, Boyd, when I first joined the board. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Any comments? Will I call for a question?
I move, we approve the agenda as presented.
All in favor of the motion, let it be known, Miss Nye, aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimously approved. There's a challenge, voter challenge. And sir, would you like to present the information we have on the challenge itself?
Yes, we do have two voter challenges that were filed. And so what we're here for today is a preliminary consideration hearing. At the preliminary consideration hearing, the board is to determine, one, whether the challenge was properly filed. And two, whether there is probable cause to proceed to a full evidentiary hearing. And I might suggest as the first order of business, Mr. Secretary, if you would like to call and see if the challenger is here, Michael Felmy.
Today, excuse me, is Mr. Michael Felmy here? Felmy here today. So raise your hand, please. He is the person who issued the challenge. Seeing no hands, I presume that he's not here.
Okay. Mr. Batten, would you provide some guidance to the board based on the challenger not being present?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We're going to 16385, which is the challenge procedure. The burden of proof for the challenge is on the challenger, and if no testimony is presented, the board shall dismiss the challenge.
So I make a motion to dismiss the challenge as written due to the absence of the challenger.
Good. Motion on the floor to dismiss the challenge. Any comments?
I'll say.
I have a question for Mr. Batten. Just going through the materials here, we have been provided. And I believe it's Mr. Felmy, as I believe the name, challenger. With quite a bit of documentation on the letter outlining his concerns. Had a chance to read through that. The fact that he is not here, is that impactful? Or can we consider the material that was submitted previously?
He needs to be here at the hearing to present his evidence.
Okay.
Under oath.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. The motion on the floor, any other comments, Dave? Any other comments on the motion to dismiss the challenge?
Yes, well, if he's not here, it's kind of clear cut.
All in favor of the motion to dismiss the challenge, let it be known, Miss Nye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimously approved. He is allowed, my understanding.
Excuse me, I need to clarify, there were two challenges filed by the same individual. So we will say that that one.
That was the challenge of Mr. Richard F. Smith Jr. And now you need to hear the challenge on Lori Mabe Smith.
Okay, so I move to dismiss the challenge.
Let me be sure. Is Mr. Laura M. Smith here? So raise your hand. Okay.
That would be the challenge voter.
Right.
Not the challenger, yes.
And again, Mr. Felmy is not here, is right. So your motion would be in order to dismiss.
The challenge against Ms. Lori Smith.
Okay. Any comments? Any comments? All in favor of the motion to dismiss, let it be known, Miss Nye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimously dismissed. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting of June 17th. Everyone get a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? All in favor of that, let it be known, Miss Nye. Excuse, the floor, this chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, let it be known, Miss Nye.
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it was unanimously approved. The floor is now open for public comments. Is there? Hold on, let me just.
Okay.
On Zoom?
Okay.
Is that a legal question? Is that considered present?
Challenge.
Okay, enough said. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very, very much. The floor is now open for public comments, and I believe that we do have some public comments. So I would ask you to come forward to the podium. Thank you very much. State your name and.
Hi, good morning, good afternoon. My name is Jan Stocklinsky. I am a proud member of Brunswick County. I'm proud to live here. I'm proud of our Board of Elections staff. I'm proud of all of you for accepting this challenge and being our Board of Elections. Very much so. And I wrote you each a letter. It is the same letter, however, copied to Sarah. Just number one, thanking you for taking this on, for your commitment to all the citizens of Brunswick County. And I just hope that you continue to do what the prior boards have done, is to look out and make sure that all of us have equal and safe access to vote in this county. And I sincerely thank you very much and have a great day and a great year, and we'll be around if you need us to help you, okay?
Thank you, Jane. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? And sir, any?
There were not any submitted through the floor.
Okay. We're at the point now in the agenda to turn the meeting over to the director for her report.
Okay, I do have a few items of update for you. The first I want to discuss is the State Board of Elections Plan, which they are calling Registration Repair, which is the method by which the state and county boards of elections will be working to remedy any voter registration record that does not have a driver's license number or the last four digits of a social security number on the record. The first phase of this that the county board will be taking part in is reviewing records that the state board identified as not having that number. And so we have a list of 1,736 voter records that we have to review to determine the following. So we need to determine, did they provide their North Carolina driver's license or the last four digits of their social security number? Did they indicate with the checkbox that they do not have a driver's license or a social security number? Or did they register prior to 2004? And so the deadline for us to complete this review is August 15th. We will be starting tomorrow. We're bringing in a temporary data entry staff member that has worked with us for several elections to completely focus on this project. So they would not be doing other office work. So I am confident that we will have that review finished by August 15th. What we will do if we find numbers on a paper form that are not present in the record, we will enter those numbers and see if they validate. And so.
Say that last statement again.
So if we, in our research, if we find that the voter has a driver's license number or the last four digits of a social security number on one of the paper registration forms that are scanned into their record, but it was not put into the system for whatever reason, we will be going back and entering those numbers into the system to try to validate them.
Okay.
Yes. And so this process on our end is just starting. I do know that the State Board of Elections is also going to work to send out mailers to any voters that don't have these numbers to try to initiate them providing those numbers to the boards of elections. And I believe that that will likely happen after the county boards review these because, as you can imagine, it would be quite expensive to mail. I think it's over 100,000 letters to voters. So I think the goal is for the counties to identify any that do not actually need to receive that notification from the state.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the 1,700 voters have the ability to self-cure. So if they are on the list of voters that previously may have not been disenfranchised, they can come in.
Yes, any voter that doesn't have the number, or even if they think they may not have a driver's license number or the last four digits of their social, can submit a voter registration form that contains those numbers or do a voter registration application through the DMV Secure Registration Portal. Either of those methods will provide the number to us for us to attempt to validate.
Just a follow-up with that. So are there going to be primaries for this election coming up?
So the municipal elections coming up, we do not have a primary.
Okay, so can people cure on? Okay, so can people cure on, by voting and showing their driver's license or their social security number?
So by showing it, no. So showing the driver's license does not cure the need for the number to be in the system. We have to have the voter provide the number to us to put in the system. My understanding is that the state board is working to have our poll book system indicate voters that do not have those numbers so that the precinct officials can obtain it at the time they appear to vote.
Okay, great.
I am not a hundred percent clear on that process quite yet. I first concentrated on the, the piece that we have a deadline of August fifteenth to get through. But there is supposed to be some sort of flag in the system that would let the precinct official know that they need to get this number from the voter.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Sarah?
Yes.
How many vote, voters in Brunswick County, were we talking about? You gave the number before.
Uh, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six.
And we currently have just under a hundred and forty thousand. Right. So, you know, we're looking at, while they need to be corrected, a very, very small percentage of the voters in Brunswick County who, who require remediation. Okay. So considering, considering the, the number of changes that are made each month, you know, I think that certainly not, not a major problem. And as you said, was prior to two thousand and four, when the law was changed, requiring those, that data. You know, some of these may be very old. So, okay.
Okay. Uh, Sarah, just for my clarification, um, by August fifteenth, okay, you're gonna be going through all hundred, seventeen hundred and thirty-six, is it?
Yes.
And will you be doing any remediation at all of the numbers?
Um, yes. So if we find a number, we will be going ahead and putting that number into the system to see if it would, will validate. And the State Board of Elections has created a special webpage for the registration repair process.
Right.
And it is being kept up to date as far as voter names. So if you go search for your name and you're on there that you are missing the number and we find a number tomorrow and we put that number in, that voter would then come off of that live search function list. So it, it will be an ongoing through August fifteenth, where if we get a number, we would be putting it through the system to try to get it to validate.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to do the board a favor.
Yes.
When you get close to, uh, August fifteenth deadline, would you provide us with a summary, not the details, just what you found and
Certainly.
what we need to do. Thank you very much.
Yes.
So if the, you know, if you get a driver's license number, but the driver's license is not registered at the dress, at the address in the voter record. Is there any?
No, that will, that will not impact its, it being able to validate. What the validation is looking for is that the name, the date of birth and the number provided match the information. So the address would not, would not matter for that.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll look forward to hearing more about that later. All right. Anything else in the director's?
Um, the only other thing I have is in the agenda item sheet for the director's report, we do have some photo ID and outreach events coming up that I wanted the, the board to be aware of. We will be pushing out a news release in the coming days to make sure people are aware of this. And I will let Melissa provide a summary of what these, what these events are going to entail.
We have some outreach events and voter registration events, um, offering upcoming. First, starting this week on Thursday, we do have the first of four scheduled sessions of poll worker orientation, if anybody wants to be a poll worker. So we have three in-person sessions scheduled, July twenty-fourth, August sixth, and August eleventh. And then we do have a, a virtual session scheduled at six P M. on August thirteenth. Information about registering for those poll worker orientation sessions is on our website, and we did have some flyers out by the agenda packets as well. So we are always looking for additional poll workers. Um, informations on those sessions have been also sent to both party chairs if they would like to disseminate that information. We do have some voter registration and voter photo ID events. Well, we will be at, um, right now, we're scheduled at four of the senior centers. Uh, well, we will have a staff member there to conduct voter registration and to issue photo IDs to, um, currently registered voters. So we have, will be in Waukamaw August fifth, Southport August twelfth, Shalote August thirteenth, and Calabash on August twenty-fifth at the senior centers. We're still working with the other two locations to see if we can get a date on the calendar with Leland and Supply. We will also be at the high schools for their back-to-school open houses, where the students come in and get their schedules and their parking passes. So we will be offering voter registration to any student that is eligible to register, as well as doing some recruiting for student election assistance. We've been very successful with that student election assistant program, so we wanna keep the momentum on those. So August fourth, we will have a representative at Early College High School, um, because they start sooner on the calendar. And then all the, the other three high schools, North Brunswick, South Brunswick, and West Brunswick, their open houses are on August nineteenth. And we will have a representative there for those open house events. And right now, the last thing currently scheduled on the calendar is National Voter Registration Day is September sixteenth. I don't know what, there it goes, okay. Um, and we will be at all of the Brunswick County library branches from eleven to one. We're working in conjunction with the library director and her branch managers for publicizing that. And we will be at all of the library locations on September sixteenth from eleven to one. Some of these events, if it's a voter registration drive or the high school open houses, we use longtime poll workers help us out with some of those events. So we will have staffing of a full-time staff member at the photo ID events because that does require a full-time staff member.
Uh, do you have anything planned for North Brunswick County? It's also like Southern Brunswick County.
Um, I am trying to coordinate with the Leland Senior Center. I have, the director and I are, haven't gotten a date yet for Leland. Working on it though.
I figured you were on.
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to work on that Leland Senior Center for a registration event up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
And I didn't have anything else for director's report?
Dave?
So, um, in October, the Brunswick County is going to have its first ever county fair. Do you have any idea whether or not you would be open to attending that?
Honestly, all I know about that fair is in passing. Um, it's not really sponsored by the county. It's just a fair that's happening in the county. I don't know even if it falls before or after the registration deadline, but, um.
Like October eleventh, so.
Yeah. Um, I mean, we'd be open, if someone invites us to participate, if we're able to, we do try to, to participate. But I haven't heard anything about that specifically.
That's it for the director's report?
That's it. Yes, sir.
I see we have no unfinished business to discuss. New business, first item, new business, the adoption of the duties of the director?
Yes.
There's a sheet in there.
Okay, um, the adoption of the duties of director is something that we do every time, um, a new board is sworn in. The reason for this is because in the general statutes, there are a lot of items that are delegated to the chair of the Board of Elections or to the Board of Elections as a whole. And the state provides us guidance, and in past, we have received information about which of those duties you can delegate to the director of the Board of Elections. Some of those include maintaining the voter registration database, preparing the county budget. And so what this document does is it outlines the duties that you are assigning to me that may have been assigned to you in the statutes, but it is appropriate for them to be delegated to the director.
The, um, I'm just beginning to look at the document.
Okay.
Is there any changes since the last time we did?
So the changes since the last time are that it was put into the format of a resolution. Previously, we just listed the items out and had the board sign. And then I did also add some items that I found in another county's duties of director based on things that were in other statutes that said the board would do. I, um, if, if you would like, I can send a, a document that outlines those changes to you if you want to table this until the next meeting.
I, I think that would be, that would be my choice. I don't know about others, but I'm just looking at the document, so I would.
I'd like to see the changes.
Okay.
I do not know that we need to table this, but.
Okay. So we'll, we'll look at that at next meeting. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Resolution for the temporary transfer of the voters?
Yes. Um, this is a process that we have done in municipal elections for many years now. And the reason for doing this is if we have a precinct that has a very small number of eligible voters in a municipal election, it can be cost prohibitive to open that precinct and staff it with precinct officials for a very small number of possible voters to turn out. Historically, we have shifted the voters from mosquito one. And if you'll note here, Melissa has put great notes together, mosquito one currently has two eligible voters for the town of Oak Island. The Longwood Precinct currently has one eligible voter for the town of Shalote. The frying pan precinct currently has nineteen eligible voters for the town of Shalote. So those are three that we do pretty much every year. We are bringing a new proposition to you today that I would like to talk about, and that is the Bolivia precinct. So Bolivia currently has a hundred and thirty eligible voters. Historically, turnout has been very low. Um, if you look, uh, twenty twenty-three, they had eight voters. Twenty twenty-one, they had four voters, and twenty nineteen, they had eight voters. It might be helpful to know that they currently do not have any contested elections. So the number of seats that they have, that's the number of candidates. You know, if, if something were contested, it might make us think that turnout would be higher. But so for the commissioner and mayor seats, there is one candidate for each of those that is open. So that is a new proposal that we're bringing to you.
Any comments, everyone, and then Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the temporary voters transfer.
So moved.
Any comments? All in favor of the, the motion, let it be known, must send I.
Aye.
That the record show is unanimously approved. Thank you very much. I will move on to the approval of the twenty twenty-five municipal early voting schedule.
Yes, so the, um, early voting schedule that we're presenting to you for the municipal election is the same schedule that we have used in prior municipal elections. We typically do not open satellite early voting locations because of the significant cost of opening those locations gets put off on the towns. And they would have to pay for the, you know, the extended early voting if we ever decided to do that. So the schedule statutorily will begin on October sixteenth and end on November first. Monday through Friday, we would propose office hours, eight thirty A M. until five o'clock P M. And that final Saturday, November first, um, eight A M. to three P M., that is a statutory requirement for those hours as well.
Question, so historically with Brunswick County, um, which days on the weekend have we been open? Saturdays, am I correct?
Um, not for municipal elections.
We would not open at all on the weekends.
Just the final Saturday.
Just the final.
Just the final Saturday. Yes.
Question, how many voters typically come out for early voting?
That is a wonderful question. I would have to go to my handy dandy spreadsheet to get that number for you, which I would be happy to do if you'll.
I'm imagining it's not many.
It's typically not that high. No.
Do we have the locations?
This would just be at the Brunswick County Cooperative Extension Training Room, which is the location that we use in lieu of the Board of Elections Office. So just that location.
Okay.
Sarah, just so the folks in the, that are here and we have it on the record. There are nineteen municipalities in Brunswick County and three special elections districts. The Brunswick County Board runs those and is reimbursed by those municipalities. So what we're talking about here is managing the expense for those municipalities, and some of them can be fairly small to make it so there's not onerous upon their budgets. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Here now, the chair will now entertain a motion to approve the, um, twenty twenty-five municipal election one-stop schedule.
So moved.
All in favor, let it be known, must send I.
Aye.
Aye.
That the record show was unanimously approved. We've moved through the agenda pretty quickly. Any other comments? Anything else? Anybody else? Randy, Dave?
Congratulations to everybody. And we're looking forward to Mr. Myers being able to be with us the next time around. Unfortunately, he's out with a family emergency, medical emergency. And, um, I think the director told us that with the guidance of the state, he will be sworn in at the next meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to everyone also. Dave?
I wanted to ask, um, the director about your concern about not having a chair for a month.
Okay.
Is that, is that a, a problem?
Truly no, because we would not be taking any action that the chair would need in between meetings. Typically, any action that we have going on would be in the presence of the full board. And if something did come up that we would only need the chair's guidance on, um, we would, I would probably try to assemble the board to get him sworn in or get him sworn in outside of a meeting.
Okay. Or the secretary.
Or the secretary.
Okay. All any comments? No other comments? The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, let it be known, must send I.
Aye.
Let me pause for a moment before everybody leaves. We have, we have a beautiful audience today. I understand that the, are we having snacks?
Yes, I believe your wife was kind enough to bring some Bernie then for the enjoyment of those in attendance. So I Yep, so I can, I can get those pulled out, and you're welcome to stick around and have some. I'll probably bring them and just put them on this.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, thanks.
I do need board members' signatures on one document.
Yep, so don't run off signs.